During a time where literally everyone in that building, no one in a year, they would be in a different place. So even with Roosevelt, though, there was some ins- I'm sure there was Roosevelt and Kennedy. It wasn't the same level of, you knew everyone at Coolidge was gonna be gone. You knew. You just didn't know where. So, one of the exercises I did with my staff is that, I brought in a couple of jars and I asked them to fill the jars up and I asked them to think of all the distractions. And the sand and little rocks represented the distractions. So as they filled it up, they, they put it all in there. I said, now the big rocks are the things that you stand true to. So whether it's family, the things you stand true in school, and just things that you stand firm in life, that you, this is my concrete and I stand by. And so what happened, they started writing on the boulders. They, they put the things like family and our students and, and building a strong culture. But what happened was that they put the, the things they stood for on top, it wouldn't fit anymore. Once they put the sand and the little pebbles, the things that didn't mean as much, the distractions, they couldn't get it in. So then we backed it up and I asked everyone to enter the jar. So I asked them, I said, okay, now, we can only control the things we can control. Coolidge is gonna close, but that's not gonna stop how we lead our students. That's not gonna stop our focus and how we resolve. So number one thing that we wanna do this, we wanna get rid of all the distractions. I'm not concerned where I'm gonna be. I had two just come in and ask where I was. I said, this is not my priority. And the reality is, it didn't bother me whatsoever. Things are gonna play out the way they're supposed to be because our first priority is doing what's best for our students. So, I said, now I was thinking of the things that are important to him, put that first. So began to put the boulders in. So I said, now thinking of little things, the, the rocks were the things where, you know, these things have some substance to it, but I could kinda, you know, make it. And they have some time to get to it. So I said, I'll put those in. Now the sand is distracted, you have nothing to do. You, you can't control it if you wanted to. Put that in later. And so we come to find out, Mr. Harvey was what? When we put them all in together.
Oh, they all fit.
They all fit. Everything that we put in at first, depending on how we looked at it, it wouldn't fit. If we let the distractors go inside, it wouldn't work. But when we focused on what was more important, and we placed things according to what we felt was more important, everything that we took out from the beginning and reversed the, the concept fit in there distinctly. So, the end of this presentation, that's the most thing that I'm proud of as we finished our last couple of months at Coolidge because I have a driven staff, a staff that has continued to stay focused for the rest of the year. And I can't say one time that after they received, you know, where they may possibly be next year, that someone came up, was this satisfied? Are all our conversations that continue on, continue on, how are we gonna continue to get better? So right now, at Coolidge, the way I look at it, the way I analyze things, we're in the fourth quarter. All right? I think we're winning the game. I believe that we do. So we're gonna continue with it with our game plan and continue to focus on the end result. So, in the end, that's my coolest story for you.
I just wanna thank Mr. Brummer for his leadership of Coolidge now like this year, but for the last number of years. We're very excited about, about Mr. Brummer's impact on the high school next year. But you can look at his students and the staff and the work that Mr. Brummer's done, and you can see the great things that have happened for kids at Coolidge. So, on behalf of the administration, the board, Mr. Brummer's, I wanna thank you for everything you've done for Coolidge.
I appreciate that. Thank you so much. And I'm bringing a talent soldier to high school too. Get ready.
If you haven't seen Mr. Smith dance.
That's the part I'm looking for.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brummer. Moving next to the Farnell's representative, first on the list is Megan Smith.
Um, how's everybody doing?
Thank you. So we decided to do something a little bit different this month, mix it up a little bit. As you know, we've been doing the Eagle of the Month.
High school teacher of the year and truly a strong leader ever since. So the county level competition, the recognition of teachers of years is a thing.
The board opens to the public and we want to provide a fair and ethical guidelines for participation as required by the Open Meetings Act. To encourage transparency and people's fairness to everyone in attendance. We also recognize that an effective meeting facilitates better decisions and promotes openness by allowing more people to stay for the poll later in the meeting. To meet these goals, we ask that you follow. We ask that you identify yourself and listen to contact information on the comment sheet to help us follow up with any comments that we make tonight. If you don't hear from us on writing, please contact us at the podium. And if you need a response, please provide contact information with a moderator at the meeting. And I'll call on people who have any comment sheets, but since I'm having to see them, I will let people out to line up at the podium. And each person will have an opportunity to address the board for up to three minutes. Comments or questions should be directed to the board president. The secretary of office of the president will raise her hand when the time is within a few seconds of expiring. This period of public comments are both agenda and non-agenda items. Public comments will end at the close of this part of the agenda. In the event that the number of people wishing to comment requires longer than thirty minutes, public comment will be temporarily postponed after thirty minutes and the time will be added to the end of the meeting. Complaints about staff should be made outside of board meetings and should follow the applicable board policy. Please contact the superintendent's office if you have any questions regarding this item. The board cannot respond to complaints about infringements in public. This is meant to promote fairness to the staff person and to the complainant. The Friends of Public Schools community acts with great civility towards one another and we ask that you help us maintain that tradition during public comment. So without further ado, anyone who would like to speak, they can approach the podium. After that long speech, anyone who wants to throw a long hug.
He went over your three minutes.
I want to remind him. So we're moving to the end. Okay. With that, I will accept a motion to modify the... Go ahead. I would like to make a motion to modify the agenda.
Should I entertain that? I mean, the amendment to that, could I ask, maybe the amendment to that to do after the consent agenda?
Do they consent agenda first?
Do they consent agenda first?
And then move that to the top of the list.
Just to kind of keep our...
Actually, Adam, I have no objection. Amendment to the motion?
Amendment to the motion would be that instead of saying after a head item five, would be the after a head item six.
It's supposed to be by Ms. Toney, remember, accepted by Mr. Dean Kraus. Any questions, comments, concerns about that? Okay, vocal. Do you want to call it now? By Adam's consent, we will modify the agenda and move towards the consent agenda. Item six on the agenda, the consent agenda, we have seven items. At six point one, the request to approve minutes of a special meeting dated March fourteenth, two thousand sixteen. Six point two, the request to approve minutes of the special meeting, March twenty first, two thousand sixteen. Request to approve minutes of the regular meeting, March twenty first, two thousand sixteen. Six point four, the request to approve bills and accounts. Six point five, the request to approve resignations and new hires. Six point six, the request to approve open schools proposed fiscal year two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen budget documents. And six point seven, the request to approve the Head Start report. Moved by Ms. Mueller, second to Adam O'Donnell. No discussions with consent, so we move forward with the vocal.
Butters?
Yes.
Dean Kraus?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Mueller?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Toomey?
Yes.
President Lattash?
Yes.
Thank you.
With seven yes votes, the motion is approved and the consent agenda passes. Moving now to action items number seven. We will first start with item seven point three with the request to approve the resolution regarding safe and supportive learning environments and LGBTQ guidance.
As we've been paying attention to the state board of education and the LGBTQ guidelines that the state board of ed is getting comments on right now, we felt that it was in the best interest of our students for the board to look at a resolution regarding supporting these guidelines from the state board. As you know, we've worked with our students quite a lot across our district to make sure they feel accepted within our community. We work a lot with our local community, with our Ferndale friends, as well as affirmations and many other groups, so that all our students are accepted, all our students feel welcome here in the building. As by evidence, by some of the reporters that have been here and by some of the interviews that have happened as of recent, our students can tell you that they feel that Ferndale Schools is very welcoming, accepting, and they feel that this is a place where they can be themselves and they can get the education that they rightfully deserve. So within that vein of supporting all students, which is part of the board's strategic plan also, I offer this resolution, and I will read through it here. It's a resolution regarding safe and supportive learning environments and LGBTQ guidance. Whereas the Ferndale Board of Education stands with the State Board of Education in the commitment to reducing the impact of high-risk factors and providing equitable resources and access to quality educational opportunities to meet the needs of all students. And whereas the Ferndale Board of Education recognizes the need for all students to have a safe and supportive school environment to progress academically and developmentally, and believes school administrators, teachers, staff, family, and students all play an important role in creating and sustaining the environment. And whereas the Ferndale Board of Education believes that students should be treated equally, fairly, and be protected from discrimination based on their real or perceived sexual orientation, gender identity, and gender expressions. And whereas, due to a variety of factors, the school experience can be significantly more difficult for students with marginalized identities. And whereas, despite widespread efforts, lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and questioning students continue to face challenges that threaten their health, safety, and learning opportunities in school. And whereas, the State Board of Education solicited input in the development of this guidance from various stakeholders from diverse sectors, including parents, students, elected officials, school administration, staff, mental health professionals, and teachers. Now therefore be resolved that the Ferndale Board of Education supports the Michigan Department of Education and the State Board of Education recommended guidance on safe and supportive learning environments for lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and questioning students.
Entertainer motion moved by Ms. Mueller, second by Ms. Toney. Any questions or comments?
Yeah, I think that I've been personally interested in this because, as you know, I'm also a teacher in another district and I definitely have students who are transgender. And I'm still making them feel, well, it's not an easy time for them. It's very difficult. So it is personal to them. And so I feel though, as a board member, as a teacher, as a parent, it is not our job to judge the students. It's our job to serve the students. And I find it particularly interesting because, you know, the Department of Education has already made rulings on this, including the Office of Civil Rights. They have all agreed that it is the right of all students to be protected and have equal rights due to their gender. And that's protected under Title IX and Ninety. So this is already federal policy. And I appreciate the State Board of Education giving us just that, giving us guidance on how to be in alignment with what is already federal policy.
I definitely support this and I think an important but often overlooked part of the guidance talks about making sure that all the staff have professional development opportunities, that we do comprehensive outreach to students and families who may need support and services and that we make sure that we're, you know, tracking and reporting any incidents that do happen on our policy. And so in the event that the resolution passes, which I would expect it to, I would just ask that the governance committee and the administration work together to review our policies and practices and see where we need to strengthen them and conform with the proposed guideline.
Goodness, starting to take a look at that, we want to make sure the Ferndale Committee. What else?
I just want to echo what Jen's saying. I know that we have a wonderful supportive community and we already have community members who are supportive of this and bringing, you know, their concerns if they see articles and wanting to make sure that we're going through the student conduct and the dress codes and all of that. So I also want to give a shout out to our wonderful community that is also vigilant behind us.
Just a question. The State Board is still taking comments on this. Right. Can we have the link, somebody have that just handy to announce so that people can know where to go to give their comments? Because I think, I think that's important. I know that there's a lot of comments coming in on the, on the, on that website opposed to these guidelines. And I think it's really, really important for people who support these guidelines to really show their voice, you know, to make, you know, to make their voice heard, to make it clear that, you know, we feel this way.
And there's, public comment will be taken through May eleventh. Input can be submitted on a line to everyvoice counts MI dot org, where they also have a mailing address for people to state their support of this to the State Board of Education, which I think is important for the State Board to hear from people that are supportive of this.
Right.
And just last week, they did take live comments and it was fairly equally split in support and against. And there were also some just very eloquent students that were talking, so, thank you. I think that's a good thing.
And I would encourage that. And I know there's a lot of information. You can read the guidelines. They're not that long. They're about seven or eight pages long. And I think that Ferndale has always been on the forefront of protecting and supporting students and ensuring that all of our students have the right academic environment in order to learn and feel safe and to grow. And I'm pleased that Ferndale is on the forefront of supporting the State Board of Education in this measure. And I know there's a lot of other districts out there that would like to do something similar and we're here to provide the assistance in that. And because I think this is a time with tremendous moves forward in civil rights. There is this backlash that's occurring and unfortunately our transgender students and friends are at the brunt of that backlash. So anything that we can do to protect these kids and our community members, I think that's something that we need to speak out and speak strong for. There's also, I believe they're taking more public comment on May eleventh. If anybody wants to go up to Lansing and show support of this. I know the State Board of Education is getting tremendous amount of backlash and negative comments. And also a bill introduced in legislation supporting the State Board in denying approval of these guidelines. And also the backlash of other bills being introduced to say that transgender students cannot use the bathroom in the schools unless it's their gender identity. So there's a tremendous amount of backlash coming. So anything that we can do to help support our transgender students and allies, I think we need to do. Without any other further comments, question, we can move forward with the vocal.
Thank you Kraus?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Mueller?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Toomey?
Yes.
Butters?
Yes.
President Lattash?
Yes.
Okay, with seven yes votes, the motion passes and the resolution is approved. Thank you everyone. And now we will move into item seven point four, which is the request for the travel ban.
So we've been working with the city of... Been talking about the discriminatory practices in North Carolina and Mississippi regarding LGBT citizens. So we're working in concert with the city, so I agree the city will be taking this up here shortly. But generally, due to the current discriminatory laws passed in North Carolina and Mississippi regarding LGBT citizens, the Ferndale School District may not expend district funds for travel to North Carolina and/or Mississippi until such time as the board president and superintendent determine that the state's discriminatory laws are repealed. So the recommendation is to not expend any district funds for travel to North Carolina or Mississippi.
Moved by Mr. O'Donnell, second to Ms. Toney. And Hart? Any comments, concerns? I will note that I've read some opinion pieces for travel bans and I've read some opinion pieces against travel bans. And there's a lot of other things that people can do to show support for the LGBT community in Mississippi and North Carolina and other states pending or will be passing. I think one of the amazing things that concert speakers can do is they can go into the city and into the state and do their performance and then donate all of their money to LGBT organizations or to heliacs as a performer. I know for us, we don't travel a whole lot to North Carolina or Mississippi, but these travel bans, I don't think there's anything we can do by going down to North Carolina or Mississippi. And I'd be concerned to take down a transgender student or transgender staff person and wonder where they would have to use the bathroom in these states. So I would encourage anyone from North Carolina or Mississippi to come on up to Michigan and especially Ferndale and see how it can be done and how we can all get along and students can have a great environment and have a supportive environment to learn and to grow and to be a part of a supportive, welcoming community. So that's my thoughts on these travel bans. And hopefully enough people will put pressure on these states to make it happen.
So we're doing active advertising in North Carolina, Mississippi to bring students to us.
Come on in. We might have to open up the schools and choice to other states. What are you going to do?
Pure Michigan campaign.
Any other questions or comments?
Just in support of doing this, these kinds of actions, you know, when a lot of people and institutions and organizations take them do have an effect on state legislatures and governors and even that ultimately in North Carolina and Mississippi, they don't change these laws. It serves as a deterrent to other states acting on the circumstances that are used to it. So I think these are not here to stop, but they actually do have an effect. And we've seen, you know, businesses lobbying in the same direction. In Georgia, the governor detailed a similar lobbying.
I also want to do everything we can to support our students here and show them that we have their ass. Okay, without further comment, can you go with...
Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Mueller?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Toomey?
Yes.
Butters?
Yes.
Dean Kraus?
Yes.
President Lattash?
Yes.
Seven yes votes, the motion passes and the resolution is approved. And now we'll move backwards to action item seven point one, the request to approve the briefcase.
Ryan's always hoping Channel Two will cover him.
Right, absolutely.
So, we have two bids up, our remaining bond funds, and I invited our new architect to come and present. So, Brian?
We have twelve different bids. There is twelve different bids. We get the project order. We get the rate. The category is mechanical. The second category is mechanical. So, we took twelve different bids and we've been reviewing them. We did find out during the process that several of these are mechanical. We have a lot of work to do. A lot of this is a bit of a turn. There are careful bids. They have a question. There are bids. And then we see that there are a bit. There's like a lot of them. So, then we went on to do the next position. We have a lot with the regulation. The general trade category, recommending vision construction. There are data on that. For the mechanical category, recommending construction. There are mechanical, there are mechanical. For the electrical category, recommending electrical. There are mechanical. So, all the more recommendations. This project, we're going to do it in four hundred fifty seven hours. Six hundred ninety nine hours. We're working this schedule this summer. We just have to wait until we have the resources. We will be assembling some schedules. We have a lot of that. We can create this one. We have all the required. The other project we took down also on March twenty ninth. It's for the river. The river is. This whole is all. The system is. We're doing the project. It does involve. These. That. It's important. We received two bids. I'm bad, Jay. We have a little bit of jobs. We did review their bid. One item that we discussed during the bid. We're not even. We're not spending much right now. We're not making any replacements. We're not here for the most part. We took that number as part of the project. We said, yeah, this whole is. We built it. We managed it. And that was what happened. Ninety six thousand five thousand. We felt that this was like, we could have made the portion. Project. And then later we. So, we're recommending that we will need that portion. Project. And brought there, which of the seven hundred ninety four thousand down. The recommendation is like six hundred ninety seven thousand. We started the works and then we were shut down. Uh, we did a lot of the work. We're not. 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 It's crazy. We're not. We're not. We're not. We're not. It's unfortunate. It's a couple of things. It's a bad. It's a bad. It's a bad. Especially the most of the time. We did get. We did respond. We did. But at the end of the day. We're not. We're not. Also, just again. Summer projects. We just talked about. We can talk to someone about that. We're just. We're not. We're not. We're not. We're not. We're not. Relatively small. So, they just call me strange. I'm basically. I don't know. I don't know. We can look at. We're waiting. We're waiting. That was something that we were trying to do this year. What? What? And then JFK. We'll let you. 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 That's great. Um, but it had cost us that it breaks us down. It would be about six hundred thousand dollars. Half billion or five hundred thousand. Technology. It was simply. Technology. So, we. We said half billion. We're not. We're not. That being said, it really doesn't mean just a hundred thousand dollars. That's. We don't have any. 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 Yes, so I had a agree here. I was supposed to call you on Friday during the baseball game. Uh, we got our call permissioned. College access number. We had a debate. We called it. Actually, originally, they had. We went back. We. We ended up. We worked here in college. We've never been to college. Um, we've never seen. The chairperson. Ryan Ryan. He said that. We consider your grant. He said, we'd send us. Really. So, we'll be giving this move to the area for a college. So, that's a three year grant. That we have signed up for. There is a little bit of district expense. About five thousand dollars a year. So, we need. So, that plus also. Well, we're. Yes, we have. We have specialists. They have. They have seniors. Um, this is. And you have. They have. So, we actually have. So, another item. We need a delegation. We need a communication department. This is. This is. We need. 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 So, that is. Process. Evaluation. That's. And there is. Process. These are. We have. 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 As well as. We have. 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 So, those are the items we're trying to report today. And that was. So, we're getting. So, we're. 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 I know. So, I'll be looking forward to that. But that also is part of charity. And I know there's like lots of other activities. I think. I don't think. Right. Right. Anyway, that's. We're. 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 We're.